Well, call Jesse.
Brittany, Karen, since.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Bishop.
All righty. There is a copy of the city packet in the city. Oh wait, first, the open meetings act. The open meeting act is on the south wall for your reading and enjoyment. It is also posted online. There's a copy of the city council packet located on the counter near the talking about maker. We do need this returned to the counter due to the open meeting act. The mayor and the city council reserve a right to enter into closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meeting Act, even though closed session may not be indicated on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor, the city council to take up items on the agenda in order they're presented. However, we reserve the right to take up matters in a different order in order to accommodate our schedules. The city have grant further reserved right to adjust the order of the items on this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic submission. Please come to the podium, quote, state your name and address for the record and the agenda topic you wish to speak upon. All right, review and action of agenda.
I would make such the May fourteenth, twenty twenty four proposed agenda.
Target.
And remove Sam second that we accept the May fourteenth, twenty twenty four proposed agenda in the discussion. Charity, how do you vote? Yes, Sam?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Motion carried. Review and action of prior meeting minutes from April twenty third, twenty twenty.
We say action on prior meetings, April twenty three, twenty twenty four, and wait three.
Okay, second. Jim. Sam moved tyranny second that we accept the prior meeting minutes from April twenty third, twenty twenty four, and waive the reading any discussion. Andrew?
I am abstaining.
Sam?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
I also vote yes, motion carried. Communication.
All right, a little bit shorter this time. We have just one sort of major project going on with the street improvement. It looks like they poured the other driving lane today and they just have the connection to the existing intersection to board. And then that work will be completed. Obviously, they'll do their cleanup and the final. Tom will come through and do his final walkthrough, but that project went very smoothly and hopefully we can get that checked off the list. Otherwise, it's just a mad dash till the pool opens from this week until April, or sorry, May twenty sixth. The guys are trying to finish up a few things at the ball field so they can start working on the pool to get it filled. So we can do in water training and get the water stabilized and everything else before we open. We'll do a couple of meetings here. First, announcement on the Memorial Day cleanup cemetery cleanup at the at the haste or the Fairview Cemetery will be this Saturday, the eighteenth, from nine to noon. And obviously, if you can't stay until noon, we understand. At least I understand you've agreed to provide us with some rules, so appreciate that. And if we, I put it on Facebook, so if you see on Facebook, please share it. So we can get the orbit out. I'll repeat it on Wednesday and Friday, so it's a little bit closer to the event. Hopefully, we can get quite a few people out there. It looks like Saturday is going to be a very nice day to be outside doing some sort of gardening stuff. So I'm excited about that. The CRA will meet on Monday, May twentieth at noon in this room. Nothing major there, it's bills and claims. Honestly, it's the only thing, no action items on their agenda at this time. Another note along those lines coming up is the planning commission will have a public hearing on the forty eighth, a public hearing slash meeting on May twenty eighth, Tuesday, May twenty eighth at two thirty. The meeting is at two thirty, the public hearing is two thirty five. And that will be the first public hearing of May for the subdivision. So this is on the preliminary plat for the new subdivision. We're excited about that. Then that will come to you guys for a public hearing. That will suffice the preliminary plat process and then we'll start on the final plat process, which also requires a planning commission, public hearing as well as the city council, public hearing. So a lot, lot to happen there. I did post sort of an update on our website about the subdivision and housing progress.
Thank you.
So if you get questions or something like that, please direct them to our, our website. It's on the front page. So sort of a timeline-ish where we're at, how we're going to get there type of deal and a map. So of the preliminary plat, so we're excited about that, excited about getting that done. So we can actually have some lots to sell. Tom is working on the bidding documents. So we can leave those in at some point between the preliminary plat and final plat process. Still shooting for that target of sometime. Wait, for, for our first duck, first infrastructure ready dirt lot to be advertised for. So that's the goal and Tom thinks we can meet it. So hopefully we can, we can stick to that. I will be leaving. Sorry, I skipped one here. On the tomorrow and Thursday, I'll be in Carney or in for me. Let's see, that'll take us to our next meeting. Cemetery will meet at five fifteen on June eleventh, and then we'll meet at seven P M. That very nice. Sorry, I skipped. I went way ahead. June twenty, or sorry, May twenty eighth is our next meeting. I'm ready for like, I'm just gonna jump a bunch, so. May twenty eighth is our next meeting, the same day as the planning commission public hearing. But if you want to know when our next meeting is, June eleventh. So, and that's all I have for communications right now.
All right, thank you very much. Standing committee reports, Andrea.
And pretty much whatever cemetery, there's some cleanup in the, they kind of did some stuff with Baby Land. And then when is this actual stone supposed to be here that says Baby Land? I mean.
Stone's already here, but it's just gonna be, we've had it for.
Okay, so it's, we're just waiting on.
We're just waiting on Jason for.
The contractor to, okay.
To install it, so.
And for that, I, I see, I guess I didn't realize that. So it's, there's waiting, then that'll be done. The library met last Wednesday. And it was pretty much regular library meeting except Renee Bottom resigned from the board. So there's only three board members left at this time. She resigned due to, she said she has ways too much going on with the Western Skies right now to connect too much. So she.
She's withdrew her resignation until we can find an applicant.
Just today.
Yes, yesterday.
She asked if she could withdraw.
Okay.
Sorry, I haven't had a chance that time.
Nope, that's good to know. Okay, never mind.
So she's gonna serve until we, until we can find that person, so.
Okay.
Which, which was dated May thirty first, so it's, she hasn't technically resigned yet because it's not May thirty first. So she's, she can do that.
Okay, very good. And then they're starting their summer reading. And tree board met last week, but you know, it was really just a basic meeting event. It's nothing. They did their part last Saturday and talked about the planters. It'll go downtown when they get here and stuff like it.
Everyone's busy this time of year. Well, thank you so much.
They were those, what color are we getting them?
Yeah, they are in the bills and claims at this meeting.
Pictures attached to it.
Yeah, they should, it's one of the bills and claims in the pictures are in there of what they will look like.
It was about a flower box.
Yeah, I didn't know the best place to do that, so I thought maybe the bills and claims might be the best place to put those in there. They're called a Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania deluxe pattern, I think is what they're called, so.
Very good. Kimberly's not here, Charity?
I don't have anything.
Sam?
You.
All right. And did everyone have a chance to look at enforcement, sheriff and water reports?
They're, they're white, but they're, they're a paintable surface. So we'll, we'll start with that. If the businesses want to paint them a different color, they can paint them this red.
Okay. Right. Enforcement, sheriff and water reports. There were any chance to review those? All right, perfect. Thank you. Note that those have been accepted as presented. Financials, Jesse?
They're in process, so I'll have them to you shortly.
All right, thank you. Maybe a public comment tonight? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. And since there isn't any, we will move on to new business. Action and discussion on resolution number twenty four oh five oh two, a resolution of the mayor and the city council adopting a utility pool banner policy. Thank you for all the work on this and. I thought, I think it's ready to go. I'm ready to get a chance to look at all the updates.
Last time.
Moving on. Yeah, I just added a little detail, naming the types of holes.
Yeah, like there is like added utility and just kind of clean down so that they don't have to listen to what type of.
There's no confusion that we're talking about the city hole.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for doing.
We'll move to second action on resolution number twenty four dash oh five dash oh two. Adopting a utility pool, a payment policy.
Second.
Charity moves Sam second that we adopt resolution twenty four oh five oh two. A utility pool banner policy, any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Doug.
Side note on that, we do have the polls. In possession, so.
We're ready to go.
Somebody had a flag, so we were, we're somebody ready to hang them up from the air.
Over here.
All right, maybe just let the, what was it? I think the school was interested in participating. So I, I believe, right, this kind of originated from the school. So this was not something that the council or the city thought of. It was thought of by community members, so we appreciate their input.
Oh, so Mr. Height, the school, if they want to prepare for next year.
Yeah. Yep.
As schools, one day away from being over.
Right, right. But as you know, I'll get that really quick. It'll be here. It'll be, it'll be here pretty darn quick. All right, very exciting. Employee benefits, health insurance renewal. Very happy that, about the news that he's gonna bring us.
All right. Hey, Dan, can you hear us? Yes, I can. Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Hang on, Dan. I can hear you, but I'm just gonna turn you up a smidge, okay? Just gonna turn you up a bit. Okay, try that.
Hello?
Can you guys, can you guys hear him? Okay?
How about now?
That's a little bit.
There you go, Dan. I got you.
Great. All right. Hi, Dan. This is Dan Durden with Benefit Management. We are excited to talk to you tonight about the health insurance renewal. As maybe some of you are familiar, in October of twenty twenty two, we moved to a program called the LIGHT program, which is a group insurance, more or less association plan through the league of municipalities, which has been a real good success so far. When we moved you there in twenty twenty two, you were saving approximately twelve percent off of the plan that you had prior with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. This plan is with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Nebraska, and so that, that is not changing at this point. We are looking at some renewal action this year of a nine point six nine percent increase. You know, that might sound like a lot, but in, in light of what we're seeing in the industry, it's, it's, it seems to be pretty reasonable. The LIGHT program did have, basically, there's three rating classes right now. You are in the best rating class. There is a great rate, rate increase on the second level of fourteen percent. And the higher risk group is, is currently at nineteen percent. So hopefully, we keep you in that lower rate. They don't automatically just move you from rate class to rate class. It does, is a two-year moving average to where if your, your usage is such that it warrants moving into that next level, it could happen in a couple of years. This is a high deductible health plan, which is eligible for the HSA contributions. So in essence, the plan itself for your participants, as a single employee, there's a three thousand dollar deductible. And they must pay that deductible in full before any benefits are, are paid out. Once the deductible is met, it does pay a hundred percent of all claims for the remainder of the year. It is a calendar year deductible, and as I mentioned earlier, you, you started in October. But the way LIGHT works is everybody either has a short, well, has a short period of time when they start. And then every year thereafter, your renewal is in July. So this does go into effect from July first through June thirty of next year. So these rates are guaranteed for twelve months. So, you know, again, we, I think in your packet, you saw the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four numbers. Really is pretty, pretty straightforward. There is a increase from seven forty one for singles to eight thirteen. And then your families, which is the highest cost, is gonna be twenty three fifty eight eighty nine. You know, it's crazy what health insurance is costing, but it's, it's amazing what I see in the industry as far as claim usage, especially with the injectables and also the prescription drugs. It's not uncommon for us to see a ten thousand dollar drug a month or injectables in that, that range also, so. So again, I'm, I'm pleased with it. I guess I would say that, you know, there are other options potentially out there. Those options would, would require underwriting, and those options would also require, well, in order to get a good rate, anyway, you can always go back to the Affordable Care Act. I call it the Nonaffordable Care Act, which your rates probably were a twelve percent reduction back in October. Most likely, you'd be looking substantially like a twenty five percent increase compared to that nine. But if, if the pool does go bad, you are always eligible to go back to the Affordable Care Act at any point in time. Questions on that?
Dan, I think I shared with you what, what you have given me, and then I have just our twenty twenty three numbers in there, just so for comparison. And then provided the three non-HSA options is what I call them, the PPO options. And then the four HSA options with the recommendation for the same plan of the option number two comparable to what we have currently. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. And, and you know, you, you can go to other options that are, that are gonna be at lower in premium. But with that, for example, that HSA option number three, your deductible goes up by five hundred, but your out of pocket jumps up substantially by twenty five hundred dollars. So you know, that really is gonna impact those employees that happen to have, you know, a lot of claims. And really, you're not seeing a whole huge savings there. Where you start to see savings is where you look at that option number four, where you're looking at, you know, a pretty substantial deductible. And, you know, we do do some, and Edward and I talked a little bit about this, that there are some ways for you to take, for example, that option number four and help the employees or, and/or their dependents pay down those claims through what we call a health reimbursement arrangement. But I, I guess we, we both kind of concluded that maybe that's something that we look at when there is maybe more of a significant increase in, in the cost. But we do have a lot of cities, counties such that are, are doing those approaches that they, they buy a higher deductible and then help as claims come through to pay down those claims. So you could, for example, provide the three thousand dollar deductible to employees and then pick up that extra thirty, thirty seven fifty as a city when those claims come through. So again, something we can look at down the road.
Yeah, I think you and I discussed maybe if it gets into that fifteen to twenty percent range that we would have to alternative health insurance options. And overall, this represents, this for the council here, this represents, actually with our new employee taking in lieu of benefit, this represents about a six thousand dollar increase overall for the entire plan, HSA life, everything.
Yep. Yeah, I don't believe we saw any. So part of the LIGHT program did require life insurance with Mutual of Omaha. And there's, I believe we have fifty thousand dollars, and we do have fifty thousand dollars on all, all six of your employees, which is a nice benefit. That fifty thousand dollars is not taxed to them, nor would it be taxed to their beneficiaries. So it's a nice, nice feature that you're offering there.
And no increase in that rate.
Correct. Questions?
What's the increase monthly gonna be?
It's, it'll be six thousand for next year, so whatever.
But, okay.
Sort of that is about twelve.
About five hundred dollars a month.
Hundred dollars a month.
Increase, not total. Increase, correct, not total.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Six thousand dollars for all covered employees for the, for the next fiscal year. And that's rounding up. It's a little bit less than that. I'm just rounding that for a nice number.
I still think it's the best deal, especially with HSAs and that I can get a hundred percent and it makes a low deductible basically with an HSA. And for five hundred dollars a month, I don't think that making the jump to four is appropriate now for us to cover that extra cost. Because two, it only takes two employees, individuals, two, two individuals to, you know, press cover the difference.
Right.
So I don't, I don't, I don't see that being.
Worth it.
Well, I don't see it being worth it. I don't see it being financially responsible for what the other one is right now at this point. So I think what the HSA, and I like the option two. And that's, I think it's probably the best one, especially as you get a hundred percent if you're in, in network, so.
Yeah, yeah. I agree with you. And it's a good benefit for employees, a good way to help keep people.
Good group and retention.
Yeah, you just mentioned, my, my take is the three Rs, recruiting, retain, retention and rewarding. And you know, it's, you, you guys are probably like most, it's a difficult employment environment right now, so having benefits is huge. You know, I know there's some entities out there that don't offer, and they, they seem to have employees that come and go on a regular basis, so. The, the last piece I would encourage, and that is, and Edward, I'd be happy to help you any way we can, and that is the funding of the HSAs. Maybe you can speak to that as far as what your employees are doing, but you know, this is a very, very valuable benefit. And it's, I would encourage especially the young people that need, should be participating because as we age, you know, we all, we all have pains and aches and problems and surgeries and such. So the more you could get into an HSA, the younger you are, the better off you are.
And we, we have very good participation for, for HSA on an employee level. Okay, that the council also contributes to, to our HSA monthly as well for a single and family. So we're, we're blessed in that as well. So, and with that, with the council putting that in, we also have good employee participation in the program. So thank you. But I, I will definitely reach out to you because I'm always needing additional information for how do I get them to donate more?
Well, I tell the story always that City of Fairberry is my very first client. And once HSAs came out, we started that. And we have a retiree that's still sitting on about seventy thousand dollars in his HSA, and he's like almost seventy. So you know, it can be a very valuable thing to do and start off young. It's like retirement plan, anything else, compounding of interest and rate of return is huge. So, yeah, I would encourage that a lot.
And then I did include on the bottom of that spreadsheet that they are increasing the HS, or the the HSA twenty twenty four guidelines are forty one fifty for singles and eighty three hundred for families, which is an increase from last year as well. So, and just like Dan stated, you know, you, you, if you can turn to your max, that's a carryover year after year after year. So you could build, you know, like you said, seventy thousand dollars up to time you're seventy and not have to worry about your health insurance after that, so.
Right.
Or, you know, part of it.
Yeah. Well, I don't have any questions. You guys have any questions?
No.
Well, very good. Appreciate your time. Let me know if there's anything I can do for you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, take care.
We'll be in contact.
All right, thank you.
And I would, you guys are sold in with the HSA to also state that you're gonna contribute a certain amount.
With a percentage?
So we're doing fifty a month for individuals and a hundred a month for families.
That's what we are as a city.
And we pay it, but we divide it and pay it out each pay period.
You said fifty for individuals and a hundred for families? I'm still good with that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you want to like consider it as a, just a percentage, like almost like a match in the future. You know what I mean?
Oh, so then that'll make it a view more incentive to contribute.
Right, like if we did one percent, and we do, we manage, you know, then you put, you know, you have one percent match or something like that.
In the past, we did do, you guys gave a certain amount, and then we did a match that you do another potential like twenty five dollars each pay period or something, but we had to contribute that also.
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of how we had done it when others.
So it was a percentage, it was just a dollar. So if we, so the council was giving fifty dollars and the employee put in twenty five, and the council matched that twenty five, so that the, the council gave them actually seventy five to that individual. So it was a dollar match, not a.
Why did that go away?
When you buy, I think we switched.
Yeah. We switched it when we went with a really low deductible many years ago, several years ago, kind of in four years. At that time, we went with the lowest deductible, but it was the highest premium, so we switched.
And I think that was actually a year, Andrew, we.
We didn't contribute.
There was no, there was no city contribution to the HSA.
I think it was one year.
Yeah, it was like one year.
Yeah, then we issued a plan that was more affordable, that was higher deductible, then we went back to an HSA. So it was one year, and it was at least five.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Either the third year here or I was still on, so I don't.
It was your first charity.
I think I remember.
Yeah.
And then, and then it moved to just the single dollar, so fifty for individual and a hundred for.
But there's no stipulation that they have, that the employee has to put any in it at this point, right? Is that how it was?
We have nothing, we have no.
All of us are still contributing.
All right. I would like to revisit that, though, if we lose participation. Yeah, I mean.
Because I think it could incentivize some employees to maybe donate more to their HSA or contribute.
Exactly, exactly.
But I think we're, we have a very healthy contribution right now, but on the employee side.
How many employees we have?
I have six.
Two months, I was twelve, we ate an extra two hundred bucks. I don't know, something to think about.
We can, we can, you, we can discuss at a budget time because we can change it at budget, right?
Yeah, the thing is, is we're stopped watch, like some of the individuals may have contributed already too much, but it'd be hard to, you know, narrow it down or anything like that. We can.
So there would be something we really needed to start next year. You already said, saying you know how much, yeah, because you can only put in.
It's what you budget.
Right, you get backed out.
So a lot of them back into it, is what she's saying, when.
Right, you get backed down. So a lot of them back into it, is what she's saying, when, like, okay, I know the council's going to give, you know, $1,200 for the year, I'm going to back into that, so I max out, is what she's saying. So we don't, and that's that max out.
So you get the benefit of every paycheck rather than at the end of the year.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Okay, well, January, I think, would probably be more appropriate. So we need to talk about it in like in November, December, so we have a plan from January.
Or like you said, talk about it during budget and kind of.
And then insulate it in January, or something in March, January.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Yep, add it to our budget.
Okay, yeah. So I think moving, changing now is a bad idea because we can screw something up and maybe get some good fee, but just something to think about the future, that if we can help somebody else contribute. I know, yeah, that's probably like 50 for a family or something like that.
You match that.
And it's only a match.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so but if you put in more, you can get the minimum, that's the minimum match.
Right, I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, good discussion.
So then I just need to make a motion that we accept. Does it really have like?
It would be QHDP option two.
Oh, it's option two, okay.
Yes. Well, if I have done the last raise, let me hear, it's actually this was.
So I move that we accept the option two, QHDP, and leave the HSA contributions the same for now.
Second. Andrew, move. Turn to second that we accept a blue cross, blue shield, QHDP, option two, leaving our HSA as they are. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, good discussion. Action and discussion on the acknowledgement of the City of Grant redevelopment authority tax increment. Bring in the annual report.
So you mentioned this after the last meeting, we sent the merits out to the taxing entities, and now we motion to accept the actual TIF report.
And we have it in our calendar, so we will be on top of it better next year.
That is what we'll be stuck upon, as far as that goes.
No, it was a, you know, I mean, there the community law guidelines change every year, just like the Urban Mings Act does. And if you're not watching it like a hawk, someone's going to get pissed. And where we only have one project, we're not like Ovalala or Imperial or North Platte have 30-plus projects every year.
Right.
Basically, one person just doing TIF in the office, so.
So and and we have to basically submit this every year.
And certify mail it to the five taxing entities.
Okay.
That should be on or
Before May.
Before May first, yeah.
Do you just have to make an accident, acknowledge, receive the report?
Yeah, and you can technically say that state that you received it before May first, even because we did present it to you guys also.
I actually accept the knowledge that the City of Grant have received the CRA's TIF annual report on May 1st of 2024.
Sam, move to your second that we acknowledge the receipt of the annual TIF report of the May 1st, 2024. Any discussion? Andrew, how do you vote? Sam?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Motion carries. Yeah, because you do email that out to us.
I did, yes.
Yes, thank you. Action and discussion on the hobby chicken report.
This might have been the confusion. I I emailed you guys before the meeting with a potential change. And the one individual pulled hers because she was getting hers, her family member, so it was going to be one place or the other. She got pulled up her notarized letters, and she went, this, everything's in order for her to have chickens.
All right, make a motion to accept the hobby chicken permit for Lee Williams.
Yeah.
We haven't knew at the end of the day.
Yeah, we.
Monday at two.
Okay, I didn't see that. Good enough.
Okay.
I didn't get any.
Okay. Uh, Sam, move every second that we accept the hobby chicken permit from Lee Williams. Any more discussion? Turney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew, yeah?
Motion carries.
Action and discussion on Resolution 240501, approving of the Nebraska Department of Transportation, Project 331, 0035014, 2024. And we are going to submit this to the Department of Federal Aviation Administration. 15 federal assistance, starting to sign anything?
Yes.
The mayor to sign, that's my finger.
I just love the airports numbers that they come up with on these grants. I wish I knew their rhyme or rhythm, but I don't. Every year, it's a different sequence of three numbers, the the number three, put it through there. So this is, we're going to split this project into two years. That's partially due to this being an election year and not really knowing that the funding will actually happen from Congress, since these are federally appropriated funds. So on the advice of our engineer, as well as the FAA, they suggested we do the planning grant this year and the construction grant next year. This will allow, also allows to use next year's allocation that we get towards this project, so this is specifically for the planning grants. Everything, no, sorry, for the for that rehab to the FBO hangar. I should probably tell you what we're doing. The blue hanger is the the FBO hanger. Uh, it won't be blue next year. No more, no more blue, so we'll have to.
You probably still call it a blue.
I thought we're going to have to officially sign.
Are you going to call it?
I have to, I'm like, oh, we just can put blue hanger on it, but I think we're going to put FBO hanger on it.
Okay.
No more outdated blue. And and construction side of it, you know, they're going to burn up the building, new siding, new windows, widening and lengthening or increasing the height of the aircraft door. New lighting.
Can a aircraft even go in that?
Yes, the smaller, smaller aircrafts, like you're saying, 310s and stuff like that can go in there. But anything with a high tail cannot go in there currently. And that's, that's prohibitive to to our operations. And the building was the building is, I mean, it's not in disrepair, but in order for it to last another 50, 60 years, it needs.
And we could never put the tractor in it because it was just a little, the door was just a little.
The tractor used to close them.
Yeah, so it'll be nice, but there's that optional, as if we needed to.
But this this grant will just cover the engineering study and environmental study review and all of that. So next year, we'll do the construction grant.
Pretty, everything pretty standard.
I move to this resolution 240501, resolution adopting and approving for the Nebraska Department of Transportation Division project dash 31, dash 0035, dash 2024. And the mayor to sign.
The mayor to sign. And remove, turn to second that we accept Resolution 240501, adopting the Nebraska Department of Transportation Aeronautics Project, and this is for a planning grant this year. Project number three, dash 31, dash 0035, dash 014, 2024. Authorizing this, mayor to sign. Any more discussion? Turney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yeah.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks very much.
Now we're going to be, everyone make a motion to go to executive session for potential litigation to improve the council members, the mayor, and Ton, Ton moved, or, or, sorry, Ton called to go into executive session at 7:39. Turney moved, and I'll second, and the second that we go into executive session at 7:39 for potential litigation. Any discussion? Sam, how are you?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion carries.
She looked at me.
I did. Sorry. Well, I tried to mix it up. Ready? Okay, I make a motion to come out of executive decision at 7:57. Turney moved, Andrew second, talking about in record session at 7:57. Put it in on this fine Tuesday evening. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, something fun. Happy fifth year work anniversary, Edward.
All right, thanks.
Your commitment and passion to the City of Grant is truly commendable, and I'm very grateful to have you as our city superintendent. I wish I had time to name all of your accomplishments, but then we would be here till nine o'clock. But a few things that I'm the most grateful for is navigating the paperwork for the Automatic Weather Observation System. The partnership with Southwest Community Betterment Corporation. All those multiple projects helped, we've helped more than 20 homeowners, providing more than $300,000 in assistance. Completing the swimming pool, which was a lot of meetings. Successful navigating the pandemic. Completing the concrete improvement projects of our hazardous intersections, which we have a few more to do, I think. A new park shelter. Replacement of aging 1930, 1940 water mains. Can you believe that, 1930? And they were still in town? What a five minutes. Multiple years of new cities. Upgrading the Hastings Memorial Library parking lot. And my favorite project, well, for now anyways, the downtown revitalization project. So your dedication to our town can be seen in every one of these projects and all the others that we do. So we're celebrating a half a decade of excellence with you. Happy fifth year anniversary. Your hard work and positive spirit continue to make our town great. Thank you, Edward. Thanks, Ed. And for that, you get a five-year anniversary certificate, and I think there's a little statement too, so.
Oh. There was, already?
You're in bottom, so.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, Edward.
Thank you.
And to five or to another half a decade.
Many, many more, I hope, with a lot more accomplishments.
And I, and I think the Oga is for that too.
You would have told me five years ago, it would have been navigating the pandemic and you know, the world of grants and and housing and everything else and the swimming pool and a downtown revitalization project, I would have looked at it cross-eyed.
Oh, I know.
The only thing I I'm going to do for the next 50 years is run cattle and punch cows, so. It was a great decision, and it's, it's been a lot of fun. I know we're, we're, the best is yet to come. It really is. So we, we got a lot of good projects in the works. We're going to continue to upgrade our infrastructure as we've shown the necessity of that, and we continue to strive for the best infrastructure for our citizens and and housing. Right on the cusp of creating something pretty special there, so I look forward to definitely the next five years and the five after that, and five after the next.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, back to the normal stuff. Action and discussion on bills and colonies.
Yeah, a lot of them.
We just kept coming, and we're like, this is.
Oh, yeah, that's right, it was three weeks. Okay. All right, I'm like, what was different? Three weeks.
Top week.
Yep.
In summer, and yeah.
Might have to take an extra long lunch break.
I move to accept bills and claims in the amount of $300,976.68.
Second.
Andrew move, Sam, second that we accept bills and claims in the amount of $300,976.68. Any discussion?
Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. We are adjourned at H O two. A little rock, even a little bit, a little bit light out still. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.